Okay. Good afternoon. I would like to call this special board meeting of July 29, 2014, to order. The time is 5:09 PM. The purpose of today's meeting is to hold a public hearing to consider the adoption of the 2014-15 tentative millage rates and the 2014-15 tentative budget. At this time, we request that cellular telephones be turned off or put in the silent mode. I would like to take this opportunity to remind members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student reaches his or her highest potential and the district's vision to be a world-class school system. Today's agenda includes presentation on the percentage of increase or decrease over the rollback rate, proposed millage, budget overview, proposed tentative budget, public hearing on the tentative budget, adoption of the required local effort millage, basic discretionary millage, capital outlay millage, resolution determining revenues and millages, and resolution adopting the tentative millage rates for fiscal year 2014-15, fiscal year 15 tentative budget and related resolution adopting the tentative budget, acceptance of the 2014 certification of taxable value, scheduling of the final budget public hearing, comments from board members, board attorney, and superintendent. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Mrs. Dozier, seconded by Mrs. Fisher. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0. I will now turn the meeting over to Dr. Nancy Graham, Superintendent, and Dr. Amy Decemore, Assistant Superintendent, Business and Finance.
I'll keep this brief in the interest of time, because I know you're interested in getting to the numbers. Just want to say we've been having this conversation. We've had a little bit of budget every month since probably February or March, and we are coming to the culmination of a proposed tentative budget. And Dr. Decemore will take you through the areas that we need to cover today. Amy?
All right. Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Graham, members of the board. This hearing is the first hearing of two public hearings required under Florida statutes to give the public an opportunity to provide input into the proposed millage levy and the budget for this fiscal year. The superintendent submitted her proposed tentative budget to you, the board, on July 22nd, and when you received a package of materials which included information on the tentative budget, including the tentative budget book for this year. This hearing was advertised in the news press on Friday, July 25, as is required by law. And the second and final budget public hearing, by your approval tonight, will be held on Tuesday, September 9, 2014, at 5:05 PM at this same location. The notice of that meeting to the public will be through a direct mailing from the property appraiser, and that mail document is known as TRIM, or the Truth in Millage Notice, and is sent as required by law. So as we get into the discussion of our budget for this year, there were several goals that the superintendent kept at the forefront for us as we formulated the budget for the 2015 fiscal year. First of all, as was made clear by the board and was also a directive of the superintendent, we structured the budget, or went into the process with the intent of structuring the budget with no use of reserves. That was the board's directive in last fiscal year, and the same applied in this fiscal year. And so as we went about structuring the budget, we kept that at the forefront. As well, the superintendent also had, as one of her priorities, salary increases for all employees. She wants to ensure that our salaries remain competitive with those counties and those places around us. We want to attract the highest quality employees, and therefore salary increases for all was a priority through this budget process. And in turn, we wanted to provide a budget, of course, that was structured with student achievement at its focus. So each of our conversations came back to how does this affect student achievement, and what will happen, or is this the priority for us when we look at student achievement as our focus? So those were our priorities as we went into the 2015 fiscal year. Now, as outlined by TRIM, we must discuss the millage rollback rate. The rollback rate is the millage which, when applied to the current year's tax roll, net of any adjustments for new growth, would produce the same dollars as received in the previous year. This year's calculated rollback rate is 7.0866 mils. We're actually levying 7.416 mils, which is an increase of 4.65% over the rollback rate. And again, we're required by law to discuss that. Now, when you look at the proposed millage rate for the 2014-2015 year of 7.416, that is a decrease of .182 mils from last year. Now, even though it's a decrease in the millage rate, the new millage rate will generate $18.8 million more than what we did the previous year because of the increase in the tax roll, which we'll discuss shortly. I also want to point out, as we're looking at the pieces of the millage here, there are three different pieces: required local effort, discretionary millage, and capital millage, for a total of 7.416. Now, the 5.168, which is the required local effort, is that millage that is set by the legislature. It is required by law in order for us to participate in any of the other FEFP revenues that the state gives us, and that millage is actually about 70% of the total millage that we're asking to levy this evening. Now, when you look at the millage comparison here, and you see what the millage has done over the past several years, as I mentioned, the 2015 millage rate of 7.416 is a decrease from last year's millage rate. When we look at the tax roll history, again, we see that increase now in 2014 and 2015. So that is a good indication of economic relief here in our county. It's good news for us. It hopefully means good news for the economy overall, and actually, in this particular fiscal year 2015, we're looking at a tax roll increase of a little over 8%. So that is good news for us, and one of the reasons why the legislature lowered that millage rate from last year to this year. When we look at what the effect of that increase in the tax roll and the decrease in the tax rate will have on the average taxpayer, there's several different scenarios that you see here. First of all, you'll see a scenario of an increase of 8.4% in property value, and 8.4% of course is the average increase. The tax roll increased 18.4%. Some people would have seen a greater increase, some people less, but that's the average percentage increase, so that's one scenario. And then the other scenario is a 3% increase, which is the cap under the Save Our Homes Amendment. So when we look at the three different values that we have here, whereas last year a home would have been valued at $100,000, $150,000, or $200,000, and then looking at the increase in that home's value in this year based on the average increase in the tax roll, you'll see that the effects on the taxpayer with this new millage rate is really moderate to minimal effect on individual taxpayers. So breaking down the total proposed millage levy, it is as follows. We're asking to levy the required local effort millage of 5.168 mils for a proposed amount to be raised of $319,654,793. Basic discretionary millage at .748, that hasn't changed, with a proposed amount to be raised of $46,265,826, and capital outlay millage at 1.5 mils with a proposed amount to be raised of $92,779,62. That total millage, again, 7.416, with a proposed amount to be raised from that millage As outlined in the superintendent's proposed tentative budget that she sent you on July 21, and that is in your tentative budget book, the total proposed 2014-15 budget, based on that millage, for all of our funds, is $1,287,214,359. Now, you see on this slide, there's a breakdown of each of those different funds, and we're going to go through and talk about each of these just very briefly. So if you recall, and for the public's use, each of our funds in the budget is earmarked for specific purposes. We have six different funds. They're all for four different reasons. The general fund really is the operating fund of the district, used for most of the educational expenses throughout the district. The debt service fund is specifically for the payment of debt, principal and interest on our outstanding mortgages. The capital fund is used to build schools, buy equipment, and provide for maintenance across the district. Food service fund is just that. It supports the breakfast and lunch program for all of our students throughout the district and is a self-supporting fund, receives no funding from any other sources. Special revenue funds are those federal funds or specific federal grants that must be used for the purpose that's outlined in the grant. And our internal service funds account for all of the insurance costs of the district, both health and workers' comp and property liability. So when we go to talk about each one of these, first of all, let's talk about the general fund, which is our major source of revenue for the district's daily operation and is also the largest fund in the budget. It is now budgeted for the tentative budget at $807.5 million. It's almost 63% of the total budget. And this year, we're estimating that this budget will support approximately 88,000 students. So when we look at what's inside of the general fund, of course, the major source of revenue in the general fund is our FEFP, or the Florida Education Finance Program. That is the state's mechanism for funding school districts, and most of the funding in the general fund comes from the FEFP. So when we look at the details of the FEFP, our school district is estimated to receive this year $626.9 million, almost $627 million. That's almost a $20 million increase from the previous year, which really was, we felt, a very moderate increase. We were disappointed with what we got from the legislature this year, although we are appreciative of the increase. It is a 1.8% increase in per pupil funding, so that's a less than 2% increase, not quite enough at this point to keep up with inflation, which is one of the reasons why it was somewhat disappointing. The per FTE, or per-weighted FTE allocation, is about $6,657 per weighted FTE. Our base student allocation increased $279, which seems to be a sizable increase, but remember, the state rolled into that base student allocation the funds that we had earmarked last year for the teacher salary allocation, so that is why the increase in the BSA looks a little bit larger than what it typically would be. Again, as we discussed earlier, there's an 8.42% in the tax roll. The FEFP takes that into account, because through the FEFP, part of that money is generated through your local property taxes, the other piece of it through funding that is received from the state. So of that $627 million that we're receiving through FEFP, 42% will actually come from state coffers. The rest of it, the bulk of it, the majority of it, will come from the property taxes through the millage that we're levying or that we're proposing you to approve today. Our sources of operating revenues, as I mentioned, this is a breakdown of what is in the operating fund now specifically. Almost 58% of those funds come from local sources, which is namely property taxes, another almost 42% through state sources, and a very, very small percentage in the general fund, less than 1%, comes from federal sources. And now, we talk about where that money goes. At this point of the tentative budget, we have almost 67% of these funds designated for instruction or direct school expenses, which includes school administration. And then you can see the various other breakdowns there. Now, as we move into the final budget, this is only the tentative, of course, so as we move into the final budget, these percentages will change, but of course, as you would expect, instruction and direct school expense will always be the biggest portion of the As we move into talking about the other funds, we have the food service fund currently in the tentative budget. It is budgeted at $59.8 million. That includes the provision for breakfast for every child in the district at no cost to parents. So next year, as we started several years ago, breakfast will be offered to each of our kids in the district at no charge to students or parents, and lunch prices are remaining the same in 2015 as they did last year. And of course, throughout our food service program, healthy choices are the focus. The special revenue funds, right now, are budgeted at $55.7 million. Now, special revenue, recall, are those federal funds that we receive through grants. So some major sources of funding within this fund are Title I, IDEA, Race to the Top, and our TIF grant. So those are some of the major things that we have in our special revenue or federal funds for this year. This is early in the process. It's only the tentative budget, so we expect that when we get to the final budget, this number in our federal revenue will grow as we begin to recognize additional federal grants that we're receiving between now and September. Our capital funds, which has been a big source of discussion for us over the past several years, and one that we just got through discussing in the briefing as well, currently, our capital fund is at $186.9 million, so almost $187 million. The local property taxes that we are proposing to levy this evening are the sole substantial source of revenue within the capital funds at this time. The five-year plan that we've discussed quite a little bit, in terms of the five-year plan for capital, has no new schools built into it due to our funding circumstances. However, we know that seats are needed. So we must be able to come up with another revenue source needed for our plan to remain viable, or come up with other options in terms of providing seats and other needed capital expenditures, such as for maintenance and technology across the district. Our debt service fund, which is directly related to our capital fund, because money for debt service is transferred from capital in order to pay our principal and interest payments, our debt service payments are budgeted for 2015 at $42.8 million for the 2015 year. Now, according to statute, we are allowed to use up to 75% of the capital property taxes that we are raising in order to pay principal and interest or debt service payments. So you can go up to 75%. According to our statutory capacity, we're at 62%. So we're well below that cap. Now, you, as a board, have told us that you really would like for us to stay at about 50% of the revenues that we're raising from property taxes, and we are at 92.4% of that limit as well. So we're still underneath that limit. We continue to creep a little bit below that recommended limit each year, which is a good thing. That means we're paying down the mortgage, so to speak, inside of the district, but that also means that we do have some capacity to borrow additional money if it becomes necessary. And that's why we have to analyze the need for that debt based on the growth. In terms of our reserves in the district, we have had substantial discussion about our reserves, and one of the things that we talked about within the goals of the FY15 budget were that we wanted to make sure that we built our budget without the use of those. Of course, reserves are used to protect the district's financial position, and we did utilize reserves in FY12 and FY13 to balance our budget, but the board's directive was to hold steady in doing that in FY14 and beyond. The reserves that we have budgeted at this point are $20 million in contingency fund, and then $26 million in another reserve pot that we have been calling amongst ourselves the Reserve for Board Priorities, for a total of $46 million. That stands at the same amount as it did the previous year, so we have not utilized those funds in any way. And that amount, that $46 million, represents about 7% of the current revenue we have coming into the operating fund for the FY15 year. So well within the limit of the 5% to 10% that the state typically talks about. So overall, our 2015 budget is built to support 120 schools and an estimated 88,000 students. It supports the initiatives of the state, supports the district's vision and mission, and is centered, we believe, on student achievement. And it is, of course, as I said, in support of our mission, which is to ensure that every student reaches his or her highest personal potential, and we are then submitting this budget in support of our students, the employees of the Lee County School District, and the citizens of Lee County. So what we're asking you to do tonight, based on this information, is to adopt all of the proposed millages for the 2014-2015 tentative budget, to adopt the tentative budget for the 2014-15 fiscal year, and to adopt all of the resolutions related.
The next item on the agenda is the public hearing. We will now recess this special school board meeting and open the public hearing to consider the adoption of the tentative proposed millage rates and the tentative budget for 2014-15. Dr. Graham, please continue by stating your recommendations.
I recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt the 2014-2015 tentative proposed required local effort millage of 5.168 mils with a proposed amount to be raised of $319,654,793. The RLE millage includes basic RLE of 5.160 and a prior period adjustment millage of .008. I recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt the 2014-2015 tentative proposed basic discretionary millage of .748 mils with a proposed amount to be raised of $46,265,826. I recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt the 2014-15 tentative proposed capital outlay millage of 1.500 with a proposed amount to be raised of $92,779,62. The total millage will equal 7.416 mils with a total amount to be raised of $458,699,681. The total millage rate to be levied exceeds the rollback rate. It is an increase in the rollback rate of 4.65%. I recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt the resolution determining revenues and millages levied and the resolution adopting the tentative millage rates for the fiscal year 2014-2015. I recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt the tentative budget and related resolution adopting the tentative budget for the 2014-2015 school year as follows: general operating, $807,451,291; special revenue budget, $115,551,86; debt service budget, $46,603,29; capital out-
outlay budget, $186,913,62; internal service budget, $130,698,591; total tentative budget, I recommend that the Lee County School Board accept the 2014 certification of taxable value for Lee County, Form DR420-S, and authorize the superintendent to complete and execute the form. I recommend that the Lee County School Board schedule a public hearing on the final 2014-2015 millage levies and final budget for the 2014-2015 school year for Tuesday, September 9, 2014, at a specially scheduled board meeting to begin at 5:05 PM at the Lee County Public Education Center boardroom. At this time, the public will be invited to speak on these matters. The time allowed is three minutes per speaker. Is there anyone in the right section who wishes to address the board? Anyone on the left? I now close this public hearing and reconvene the special school board meeting of July 29, 2014. The board will now consider each of the superintendent's recommendations. Dr. Graham, please restate, restate your recommendations individually, allowing the board the opportunity to vote before moving on to the next one.
Recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt the 2014-2015 tentative proposed required local effort millage of 5.168 mils, with a proposed amount to be raised of $319,654,793. The RLE millage includes basic RLE of 5.160 and a prior period adjustment millage of .008.
Board members, you have heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
By Mrs. Fisher, seconded by Mrs. Dozier. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
I recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt the 2014-2015 tentative proposed basic discretionary millage of .748 mils, with a proposed amount to be raised of $46,265,826.
Board members, you have heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Mrs. Fisher, seconded by Mrs. Dozier. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero.
I recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt the 2014-2015 tentative proposed capital outlay millage of 1.500, with a proposed amount to be raised of $92,799,62. The total millage will equal 7.416 mils, with a total amount to be raised of $458,699,681. The total millage rate to be levied exceeds the rollback rate. It is an increase in the rollback rate of 4.65%.
Board members, is that about the amount?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, we need to repeat that.
Amount to be raised, I don't know what I said. Amount to be raised of $92,779,62.
Board members, you have heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Dozier. Is there, seconded by Mrs. Fisher. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero.
I recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt the resolution determining revenues and millages levied and the resolution adopting the tentative millage rates for the fiscal year 2014-2015.
Board members, you have heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Mrs. Fisher, seconded by Mrs. Dozier. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero.
I recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt the tentative budget and related resolution adopting the tentative budget for the 2014-2015 school year as follows: general operating, $807,451,291; special revenue budget, $115,551,86; debt service budget, $46,603,29; capital outlay budget, $186,913,62; internal service budget, $130,698,591; total tentative budget, $1,287,214,359.
Board members, you have heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by, moved by Mrs. Dozier, supported by Mr. Armstrong. Any discussion? Mrs. Dozier.
Yes, I have a question for the superintendent. Is this budget, is this absolutely the best budget that you and your staff could come up with?
I believe that it is.
All right. And you have assured us in the past that with this budget, you will be able to do everything that you need to do for us to move closer to becoming a world-class school system, and all of our students are going to be performing very highly this coming year?
As highly as they possibly can, and I think you'll see alignment with the upcoming strategic plan as well.
Okay, all right. I can, I can support this then.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero.
I recommend that the Lee County School Board accept the 2014 certification of taxable value for Lee County, Form DR420-S, and authorize the superintendent to complete and execute the form.
Board members, you have heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Dozier, seconded by Mrs. Fisher. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero.
I recommend that the Lee County School Board schedule a public hearing on the final 2014-2015 millage levies and final budget for the 2014-2015 school year for Tuesday, September 9, 2014, at a specially scheduled board meeting to begin at 5:05 PM at the Lee County Public Education Center boardroom.
Board members, you have heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Fisher, seconded by Mrs. Dozier. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero. Next on the agenda are comments from board members, the board attorney, and the superintendent. Ms. Fisher?
No comments right now. Thank you.
Mrs. Dozier?
Well, I, I do have a couple of comments. While it may seem that there wasn't a lot of discussion at the table tonight over this tentative budget, there has been, I wish I had counted up the number of hours that we have spent going over the budget. But the, but the one eye-opening thing that, that the public needs to realize, and, and it's regretful, and that is that 57.889% of our budget is on the backs of our local individuals and our local citizens. We only get .47% from the federal government, and we get 41.64% from the state. And I will remind the public again that as we move into this legislative session, we will need to have your voices being heard, we will need to have you in lockstep with us as we go and we lobby and we talk with our legislators, because it is clearly stated in the Constitution that the paramount duty of the legislature is to provide funding for public education. And we are still in the lower quartile as far as amount of funding per students that we were, per student that we receive in the state of Florida. And if you don't think that this is enough for your students, and you would like to see more, then I would invite you to join us in Tallahassee as we go and we, we let our case be known to our legislators as we tell them that our students deserve more. Thank you.
Mr. Armstrong?
I have none right now.
I have none, other than to say thank you very much, Mrs. Dozier. Mr. Martin?
I have none, thank you.
And Dr. Graham?
Thank you for your support of this tentative budget.
At this point, having no other business to come before this body, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Mrs. Dozier, supported by Ms. Fisher. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. Thank you very much.